The May 8, 2025, Des Moines City Council meeting is now called to order. Councilmember Harris will now lead us in the pledge. Please stand if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To all the public joining us tonight, there are few of you. Welcome and thank you for attending. And for those watching online or on Channel 21, please know that we can't attend to our phones from the dais. But if you experience any technical problems, please email cityclerk@desmoinewa.gov. So let the record show that all councilmembers are present and that Councilmember Nutting will be participating remotely tonight. All right. First up, we have a proclamation in honor of our -- oh, I guess the chief is going to be here for this decision.
He is there.
Oh, there he is. Very good. I'm like, whoa.
The Tina's height is worrying him.
Okay, great. So we have a proclamation tonight in honor of some special folks that work for our city and are heroes in blue. So I can't imagine putting my life on the line daily and protecting my community. So thank you so much. So the purpose of this item tonight is to read this proclamation recognizing National Police Week. And I'd like to invite the chief up to -- do you have a short?
Do we need to do a motion?
Not yet.
Not yet.
So would you like -- did you have a few things that you would like to say or just receive the proclamation? Don't want to put you on the spot here, but okay. All right. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you so much, Mayor. On behalf of the Police Department, thank you for your kind words. Quite frankly, a lot of times I'm the one standing up here and get a lot of the credit, but it's the men and women out there driving the cars around, going to the calls, doing the work. They're the ones that deserve all the credit for your Police Department, the level of service and the public support we have. So I do thank you very much. More importantly, I thank the men and women that are out there in the street. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we'll have a motion and then we'll open for any comments from the dais. So do we have a motion? Councilmember Mahoney.
I move to approve the proclamation recognizing May 11 through the 17 of 2025 as National Police Week.
Second, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz. Any comments from the dais tonight before we read the proclamation? Councilmember Mahoney and then Councilmember Nutting.
Chief, please pass it on or if you get this recording, pass it on to your officers and your staff because everyone on that team does really well. I think the job you do isn't appreciated at the level it is. And I'll use an example is that two or three in the morning when everybody's safely sleeping, your boys and girls are out there doing what it is so we can sleep safely. You put your lives on the line before us and it's been a pleasure to work with all of you. I've met the officers. I think the persona of the police in back in the '90s and even the early 2000s here, the dynamics changed and the high level of professionalism, sympathy, empathy, and all of the other things that come with a job. I think when you hear about it nationally and how police portrayed, you -- your team has provided a different type of empathy, a different type of way the position should be held, what now I think is the way it has to be done. The accreditations you've earned, the fact that you're -- that they're working right now and doing overtime at a level that's ridiculous, and we both know that unfortunately because I think we let you down, that I just can't say thank you enough to all of them. And I hope they get to see this and I've truly appreciated it. The seven some years I've been here, I have done ride-alongs, I've seen the professionalism, I've talked to many of the officers, all kinds of community events, and not once have I not left being more impressed than I was even before. The caliber you hire is at the utmost professionalism and I just want to thank you. And I'll recognize former chiefs that also did a great job to create the culture here. But thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Nutting.
Thank you, Mayor. I really don't have much more to add to Councilmember Mahoney's other than the fact that we have got a great force and the fact that through all of our difficult times, we have been able to maintain our own shield and maintain our accreditation and maintain the level of service that we have. It just proves that our officers love our city, even though most of them do not live in our city. They serve to protect and they're just a great team. And I can't say much more. This is well deserved. And thank you, Chief, and thank you, the entire police force and their supporting staff.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I echo a lot of what's been said. I just think the willingness of anybody to take a position as a police officer and, you know, put themselves on the line on a regular basis and at 2:00 AM or whatever time of the day is really just something that needs to be appreciated by the community. The fact that this police force is providing the level of service that it is despite the budget situation that we have, despite the overtime that people are being required to work, I think is outstanding. And, you know, as you know professionally, I see a lot of police reports. And I can tell you that every time I've seen an interaction with the Des Moines Police Department, the level of professionalism with which this is approached, and that's not just the accreditation and the other things, it's actually the way the officers interact with the public. Professionalism, care for the community, and empathy for the situation, I really think needs to be appreciated more. So thank you and please pass that along to everyone.
All right. Well, ditto. I love you guys, every one of you, and I hope you feel it. And same with I see the demeanor and the care, the professionalism. Appreciate it so much. And the strategic and creative thinking, stuff that gets brought forward as far as policy, how are we going to solve these problems in a unique way? If we're strapped with capacity, appreciate that too. So thank you so much. All right. Without further ado. Whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15 as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the calendar week in which May 15 falls as National Police Week. And whereas, the dedicated men and women of the City of Des Moines Police Department dedicate themselves to protecting the lives, property, and rights of our residents, upholding the law with courage, integrity, and professionalism. And whereas, these officers serve as guardians of our community, responding to emergencies, fostering public safety, and building trust through their commitment to justice and compassion. And whereas, it's important that all citizens know and understand the duties and responsibilities of their police department and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, defending them against violence or disorder, and guarding the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas, our police department has grown to be a modern and well-respected law enforcement agency which unceasingly provides a vital public service. And whereas, U.S. flags should be flown at half-staff on May 15 for Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families. Now therefore, the Des Moines City Council hereby proclaims May 11 through 17, 2025 as National Police Week, signed this 8th day of May, 2025. And if we'll all come down. Pardon? Oh, thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, we've got a motion and a second on the table. We've had discussion and comments. All in favor, raise your right hand. It looks like he's unanimous. Seven to zero. All right. Thank you. So we have the proclamation and we'll have a photo up if the council would like to come down. And I don't know if you want to take that in front of Councilmember Nutting. You'll have to smile there.
What is that, the Lord of the Rings or something?
So you may have to tell us where it stands, guys. I was checking here and there. A little bit. That's the -- she's having a little trouble here. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Here you go. Okay. All right, next up, we have an executive session. The council will now take recess to executive session for the purpose of discussing potential litigation under RCW 42.30.1101i and also property acquisition under RCW 42.30.1101b. Normally, this item would fall later in the evening. However, we are hosting outside legal counsel this evening. The session is expected to last for 30 minutes until 6:42.
The City Council Business Meeting is now reconvened. All right, next up, we have, do we have any correspondence not previously received by the council?
No, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Now it's time for comments from the public. It's, we ask that you keep your comments respectful and please recognize that any person speaking or acting in a way that's disruptive to the meeting will be removed. You'll have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and your city of residence. I don't have anybody who signed up. Is there anybody in the audience who came tonight wishing to make public comment but did not realize they needed to sign in? All right. And Travis just walked in. Travis, I'm just gonna give, it's time for public comment. Did you have any public comment prepared tonight? Or you've got a presentation, right, or later?
I'm pretty easy to answer any kind of questions you have.
We're not at that point yet, so good. Just trying to be, give deference to everybody in the room, so, thank you. All right, with no public comments, next up is regional committee reports. So this would normally be the place where we would allow the committee chairs to report out about our committee discussion, but because we are now piloting a committee of the whole model, we are currently not operating with committee chairs. However, several council members do serve at regional tables, and this will be an opportunity for us to share about discussions and policy that are of interest to or impact our community. Do any council members have a report? Councilmember Mahoney, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Today was the PSRC Transportation Board meeting, and I'll keep this quick and short. We kinda did a high-level overview of what the Washington State budget's looking like for transportation, and with federal funding and everything else, everything they want to do is still 23 percent short. So there'd be choices, a lot of our projects don't appear to be affected. It is a little problematic, though, and there are some challenges there. We went over some, some studies on safety and some of those kind of things, and bicycle lanes. One of the big call-outs, though, was particularly with the stories on ferries, on the news and so forth, and some of us did the demo. There was a lot of positive, "we gotta do this" kind of attitude towards passenger ferries, and we were kind of one of the ones in the leader that was mentioned. We're, we're, we're working for a charging station, some of those kind of things, so they saw opportunities. So it was real positive in that regard, and that kinda is the short version of the meeting, even though it was two hours long.
Right, thank you. Anyone else have a report out from a regional responsibility? Okay. Next up is the city manager to report with the city manager, Catherine Caffrey. I'm gonna pass the baton to her.
Mayor and council, the first item we have on there is Joe Duzenberry, one of our representatives on START, who I almost didn't see here, because he's back at the staff table. We recently attended a meeting at the Sea-Tac Airport regarding START, which is the Stakeholder Advisory Roundtable Committee. It's cities, community members, representatives from the airlines, the port itself, who get together to talk about various airport issues. This was an unusual meeting in the sense that it was really about goal-setting, it was a closed meeting as well, and so we wanted to report out kind of what happened at the meeting, and then Joe has some thoughts also, as sort of like the path forward, so I'll turn it over to him.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, councilmembers. Okay, all right. I'd like to start by thanking you for my, for my appointment to the Sea-Tac Area Roundtable, known as START. I've completed one year now, and it has been interesting finding about how the work, how the airport works, and more importantly, how it's regulated by the various agencies like the Federal Aviation Agency. As you know, each of the six cities surrounding Sea-Tac send two community representatives appointed by their councils and two staff members to START. There are two working committees, one for noise and airport operations, and the other for federal and state policy. START also has a steering committee, composed of city staff and members and airport staff. The steering committee sets the agenda for the meeting. And as the city manager said at the last full START meeting, the only agenda item was a discussion about what the members thought about the structure of the meetings and the usefulness of the information presented, with the follow-up question, "what changes would you make going forward?" That started a long and somewhat contentious discussion. At this point, I've got a couple of things I'd like to tell you about, but when I'm talking to my friends and neighbors about this, I usually try to tell them what is my opinion and what is actual factual data that I get from this port when we're, we're at the meeting. So largely what follows is my opinions. There's two parts of the discussion I'd like to tell you about. There's two parts of the discussion I'd like to tell you about. First, the, first, though, qualifier, the information that the staff, Sea-Tac staff brings to START about the operation of the expansion plans at the airport, it's interesting and has some valuable information, but the presentation are, presentations are information-only. There's no part where they say, "Hey, what would you like, what would your community like to see?" You know, there's no part that's, there's no, they don't ask us, you know, if we ask why, or could this be different, or, or why are you doing it this way? We're quickly answered by reference to some long FAA regulation. There were some comments about the disconnect between the steering committee and the community members. The community members felt that they only heard what the steering committee really wanted to bring to the full meetings. Frankly, I agree with that, but I think this disconnect is much as on our end here in the community as it is at START. Outside of a small circle of friends and neighbors, who are probably tired of hearing about this now, I don't really interact with the community. I know that council has authorized the formation of a community airport committee. I would suggest that the council seek out members for the committee that would be willing to go out into the community, to the service clubs, the condo associations, the community clubs, tell them about the START and the operations at the airport. I believe the benefits would be more information in the community about specific things, like how the flight paths work, but there was a lot of questions about that, how to access the, the noise complaint system, keep the community informed on the scope and pace of Sea-Tac's expansion plans, and they're, they're large, and provide realistic answers to questions like, "When will the airport reach maximum capacity?" I hear that all the time. "And when and where will another port be, airport be built?" I hear that all the time. Provide updates on where air quality monitoring is and the progress of another important study for us, the FAA's reassessment of the noise boundary, what they call the DNL-65, that's, or their Part 150 study, and to get inputs from citizens. And by, and actually, START has, and this airport staff have an ample collection of PowerPoints, we've seen literally dozens of them, that are available for that kind of outreach. The second part of the discussion I want to tell you about is the disappointing start to the project-to-repair failed port packages, the sound packages, and I know you've all heard about that. The Port Commission authorized $5 million to do, $5 million to do extensive surveying to see how many failed installations there are and to set up a pilot program for the repairs. I believe their intention, staff's intention, commission's intention, or hope, was to find enough failed packages to qualify, you know, to turn on the FAA spigot and get some FAA money. The net result of this expensive effort funded by King County taxpayers, this was all taxpayer money, they found five houses, actually, three of them had been found in an earlier study, that would qualify for sound package repairs, and the biggest hurdle is that the FAA rules, extensive rules regarding what repairs are allowed, and their absurd noise levels that are required to even trip, you know, qualifying for the repairs, just make it impractical, it's kind of a wasted effort. In my opinion, the council should engage with the Port Commission, elected to elected, and advocate for an ongoing local program that addresses noise reduction issues in the airport communities, a program that does not rely on federal funding, excuse me. No one following what is happening in Olympia or Washington can reasonably expect that we're gonna get money for something like airport packages. Meanwhile, the problem persists and gets worse, the, the packages keep failing. If the port can allocate $5 million for a study, surely they can find some sum, $1 million, $2 million a year, to fund an ongoing program to just go and fix some of these problems. Finally, during the discussion, a community member representing for Buryan reminded the group about a study commissioned by the State Department of Commerce in March 2018, and completed and delivered in June 2020. And I know, I know most of you have seen this, the title of the report is "Study of the Current and Ongoing Effects of the Operation of the Seattle-Tacoma International Airport." It is not an anti-airport document. Even though I have just started reading it, it appears to be an extensive look at Sea-Tac and the surrounding communities. The study appears to be a guide or a plan, the goal being to maintain, excuse me, the efficient operation of the airport while protecting the airport community's ability to provide the same social and economic opportunities that the rest of the county enjoys. The study examines several areas related to environmental and socio-economic impacts and includes over 60 specific recommendations, any one of which could have been an interesting or productive discussion item for START. But in the year I've been there, this is the first I've heard of it. This is a good example of what START is and isn't. It's a good venue for the airport staff to tell the communities about the how, why, and when of ongoing operations. I believe that we should keep this communication channel open, I think it's an important indication of our goodwill towards the airport, but what it is not is a vehicle to get concrete action on specific problems. That is gonna be a political effort on our part that may or may not involve the rest of the airport communities. Hopefully, the airport community that you're thinking about, saw, creating will be a catalyst or a resource for all of you, and maybe a catalyst to help get this whole process started. I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, I don't want to be that guy, but when you, you said, well, first of all, the goal of the move, the movie, the goal of the meeting was kind of, you know, what would happen going forward? Was there any consensus on that?
No, there was actually quite a discussion about consensus, and as you know, one of the main tenets of START is, hey, we all have to agree, and there were several people in the room that said, "If that is the way it's gonna be going forward, nothing is gonna happen."
So you're saying regarding the actual body itself?
Yes. Yes, there's no consensus on consensus, that's what, yeah.
So, like, what, is it just, you know, next meeting, we'll, you know, go back to it again?
Frankly, and the city manager may have an, some comments on this too, frankly, I think it was much more of a discussion than the airport staff was expecting.
The, the consultants that they use that facilitate the meetings have reached out to the city managers at each of the cities, and so I have a call with them tomorrow that I think is sort of a recap and figure out next steps, but it's, it was, it was like opening up Pandora's box of some real big issues, and then it was 7:30 and time to be done.
Oh, 'cause I just, I looked at the agenda and it had all these things about refreshments afterwards, and I was expecting some kind of congenial. Okay, the, two other really quick things, and again, hate to be that guy, but when you say the FAA allowing, you know, sound insulation, you use the word allow, and I just, I always have to hop on people. The port is legally allowed to pay for any sound insulation or HVAC stuff that it wants to repair on any system that it previously installed. They, and I just, I'm trying not to get too rhetorical, but we were just talking to lawyers, and it's like you're in a room with lawyers for one side of a negotiation, and their entire position has been about reimbursement. They don't portray it that way, however. In other words, they don't want to pay for things without assurance that they will be reimbursed, but that is not the same thing as the ability to, to do so. And if I could just convey that going forward, people should talk about what they can do, given their incredibly deep pockets, versus what they would like to be reimbursed for down the road. And with that, thank you so much, sir.
Noted.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Joe, thank you for your candor. It's, it's appreciated. I just kinda wanted to follow up your suggestion of an annual amount with the port, the port booking, putting it forward without trying, for the sound insulation replacements, things like that. Is that coming just from you? Was there any discussion about that? Was there any indication that, okay, maybe the port could use this as a pretty good way to sort of help their, you know, help their identity in the community?
Apparently, I heard about it. Apparently, the San Francisco International Airport has a program like that, and, and after, at the social hour afterwards, I, I talked to the two people that were in charge of the, the airports program and to, you know, as it is to date, and I brought that up, and they said, "Well, it's a matter of funding," and they, they said, and the one person appeared to be quite knowledgeable, he said, "Yeah, they fund that with revenue from their concessions." I don't know, Councilmember Harris knows much more about how there's various revenue streams that all add up to a little over $1 billion a year, but some of them are quite restrictive on what, you know, what, what they can do with that money. So I would imagine that, but, but again, going back to it, it's hard to imagine that somewhere in there, they couldn't come up with some sum of money and just have people get on a list and just take the first 10 every year and go fix what it, what is wrong with their sound packages. The problem is, and this is where the FAA comes in, that the most common, when they did the survey, the most common failure was in the sound windows. And as you all know, we all have double windows, some people have triple windows now, and over time, those seals fail, the windows fog up, and the, the program considers that a warranty issue. We don't, we're not gonna pay for that. It's a warranty issue. Another thing that really helps sound in a new construction or even retrofitting an old construction, storm doors. But if your storm door's broken and you just want to get that replaced, no, that's a warranty issue. So what, by restricting what they will actually fix, like Councilmember Harris said, it's ventilation, fans and the ventilation system and things like that, they're, they're taking out of the equation the things that most often fail. So. Thanks.
Any other questions? Councilmember Harris.
Well, ju- just to be clear, they totally can replace doors and, and stuff like that. The, the city of San Francisco, San Francisco County, they just, it doesn't matter whether it comes from snack machines, parking, rentals, whatever, they, they find the money and every year they just, you know, put some money into a fund, and that was the hope with the state legislation last year, the 2020 study you, you mentioned, just.
I, yeah, I understand, noted, but frankly, those people, the staff people that come to START are not gonna do that for us.
No, I, I, I get it. I, what I appreciate about your participation is that willingness and eagerness to provide this information, and because frankly, there's always this information asymmetry, there's just, and without you, without someone like you, it's even more challenging to get anything out into the community about what's possible. So if I haven't been gracious enough, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Don't worry about that.
Right. Looks like we're good. Thank you so much, Joe. Appreciate you being here. Oh, did you have something? Okay, looks like there's another question for you, sir. Councilmember Oxiger.
So when you said, you said that the START committee, do they, they're expecting consensus in the, or unanimity?
Yeah, let me, 'cause I brought, I was the one that initially said I thought having 100% consensus was unrealistic. So apparently, in the START guiding documents, it's they only move an issue forward if 100% of the committee agrees. And so I was the one that I think sort of raised the point that that sounds nice, but is kind of ridiculous. I mean, inherently, the port and the cities are not gonna agree on lots of stuff, so then those issues never get to move forward. So we raised that, it did kinda open up, I think, more discussion than the port staff was ready for, and there was no resolution on that.
So, but the determinant of whether or not the degree of agreement is with the port or is it with the FAA?
It's with, it's with everybody in the, in the START, like, group, which includes, like, airlines, port representatives, and so I just use the port, 'cause I mean, I think that's really the crux of the conflict.
Well, that's a recipe for divide and conquer. I mean, that's, you know. Is this something that you, you had mentioned, electeds to electeds discussion, is this something that there would be value in taking this up with the port, uh, commission?
Potentially. I mean, I think during our social hour, I talked to some of the port staff about sort of what's the future of START, given Lance's departure as the managing director of the airport, 'cause my understanding is this was really kind of his, his brainchild, and the staff are pretty open on, they don't even know what the future of the group is. So I think before electeds talk to port electeds, it'd be good to sort of see what's gonna happen with this committee, but there may be a time where that's helpful.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Okay, our next item, thank you so much, Joe, is Bonnie is gonna give a super brief update on administrative services as she comes up. It is her birthday on Sunday.
Aww.
So I think a certain harbor master has something for her. As he does that, we.
Every year.
I know, I heard, this is apparently the thing.
I don't mean to sound ungrateful.
Aww.
You know how like.
Happy birthday to Bonnie.
Happy birthday.
That's very stupid.
Thank you.
They're from all of us.
Thank you, everyone. That's very sweet.
Aww. So as she gets ready, real quick, why we're doing this, so, council, several of you, and it came up even in my kind of first evaluation from you all, have asked for more regular updates on operations in general. So we are doing these when we can fit them in. Oh, that's the, so, you know, Mike did one on Public Works recently, Chief Bo did one, so we're gonna add these onto agendas when time allows, and Bonnie's gonna be pretty quick, 'cause we have a lot of items tonight.
Yes, thank you, Catherine. Mayor, council, good evening. I'm Bonnie Wilkins, the Director of Administrative Services, and I will talk super fast and go through this super quick. It's not working. Sorry, next slide, please, or gimme, oops. Okay, great, thanks, Tara. Okay, the Administrative Services Department is a small but mighty team of six who serve both internal and external customers. We're oftentimes the ones who customers interact with first, and here's a very high-level overview of some of their duties. We have a Communication and Community Program Analyst, a City Hall Office Specialist, which was key in getting our doors open over in City Hall Suite D. She's great, as all of them are, our Admin Coordinator, our Deputy City Clerk, our City Clerk, and myself, the Director of Administrative Services. Let's take a look here. Next slide is an overview of the Administrative Services Director role. There's a list right there, but really emphasis right now on communications and branding. As you know, you've selected your logo last week, so we've got those files coming back to us soon, and we are working really hard to make all of our social media and our output to the public uniform looking good, looking professional, and we're super excited to start using that new logo. With that, the website design is coming soon, we should have something coming back to council in mid-June, and we're working through right now scoring all of the submissions that we received back from companies. And my favorite one at the very bottom is other duties as assigned. The City Clerk's office, this slide is also including both our City Clerk and our Deputy City Clerk, and also with our Admin Assistant, they're all right now doing a lot of cross-training, and pretty much everything that happens here tonight comes out of the City Clerk's office, and it also includes a lot of the follow-up materials, all the ordinance publications, the packet materials back on the website, those kinds of things. We also have records management, we're working really hard, our City Clerk's office is working really hard with other departments to help manage all of the massive load of documents that we have out there. We'd like to get that down to a more manageable, less risk for the city when we have public records requests. And what's, not on, also on there is other duties as assigned. The City Clerk's office is oftentimes a real starting place for a lot of people. They don't know where to go, what questions to ask, and who to ask it to. The City Clerk's office will start that off and get them to the right place on door, see what they need to do to get them the help they need. And of course, you know me, I love to give public record statistics, and so here's a 2024 to 2025 comparison, although it's 2024 year to date. What's really interesting to note is we did 2,113 requests last year that equal What's really interesting to note is we did 2,113 requests last year that equated to 2,453 man-hours, and a normal work year is 2,080. So, we can say that, you know, one plus to get those records done. And the City Clerk, the Deputy City Clerk, and the Admin Assistant all work when they can. We have, you know, our Deputy City Clerk is our dedicated public records person, but they all pitch in to get that huge load processed. We still have a few outstanding from 2023, a few from '24, and the rest are from 2025. And we have right now 63 requests open and active out of the 628 we received so far. And our current projects, as I mentioned, our website design development is coming in June, we're super excited, and we increased our public records fees, starting off, you know, slow, but we're going to get there. It's not going to be zillions, but it might be, you know, thousands. Passport services, we've been approved by the state, we're just waiting. They're on a kind of a moratorium on location, so we don't know when that will come back, but that's hopefully a goal very soon. We're working with legal on notary services to get that to the public, and of course, always researching other revenue generators. One of them is maybe a copying service. But, you know, this is just a little sample of what we're always thinking about, how to make more money for the city and reduce expenses. And is it? Thank you.
Any questions? Councilmember Harris.
Well, first of all, so it's Public Service Employees Week, and so...
Correct. And my birthday.
And your birthday, yeah. So, you know, you just have them both. You know, it's hard to tell which is, this has absolutely nothing to do with, but because essentially you do everything. What would be involved with getting Orca cards, a dispenser of some kind? I nag about this periodically, and this just seemed like a spot to, because the number one thing that I hear from people regarding transit is getting that initial, in other words, once you're in the system, it's like you never, I haven't had to use the card, like, I can't remember, I don't even know where it is. But you have to, like, get the thing, and if there was a kiosk or something somewhere around, not saying it's a moneymaker, but just because you have the thing.
Well, years ago, I like to say that, because when you're here a thousand years, you can say that. But we did have an outlet up at the senior center, activity center now, but they did have a time when they were selling Orca cards and renewing them up there. So, it's just a check-in with Sound Transit, see if we can make that happen again.
Real quick, all three light rail stations will have them. Angle Lake does, so.
Great, thank you.
You can just inform people.
Perfect, thank you.
I think it'd be too close proximity for something like that.
Thanks. Noted, thank you.
Thanks, Bonnie.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? No, and Councilmember Nutting, you're good? Okay?
Thank you.
Good, thanks, Bonnie.
All right, that concludes my report.
Wow.
Earlier, we were noticed, it has changed, we were going to have a discussion on appointed committees in this segment, but that has been moved to later in the meeting. So, moving on to consent. Would the City Clerk please read the consent calendar?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, approval of minutes. Item three, addendum two with Moffett Nickel Engineering LM and N Doc Replacement Project. Item four, North Hill Emletri Walkway Improvements Project Consultant Contract Supplement Number One. Item five, 2025 Des Moines Farmer Market Agreement. And that concludes the consent agenda, Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Nutting?
I move to approve the consent calendar as read.
Do I have a second? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, for the second, is there an item that a council member wishes to pull? Councilmember Harris.
Item number three.
All right. Any others? All right, so we'll vote on items one, two, four, five, one, two, four, and five. All in favor, raise your right hand. It looks like it's unanimous, thank you very much. Councilmember Harris, go ahead with item number three.
I'm so sorry. So, should I be nervous in any way about timing or any further overages?
No, sir. This...
Well, thank you.
Well, really quickly, thank you, City Manager, Mayor, Deputy Minister of Council, Scott Wilkins, with your Des Moines Marina. This ask tonight is actually for work that has been done. As you know, we were in that hiatus for a year and a half because we didn't get our permits. And in that time, we had to go back and do different more mitigation. We had, there was code changes in all the electrical, there was multiple, multiple, multiple meetings for over a year with the federal agencies and all the other things, and all this added up over time. And then Moffett Nichols had to redo the whole plan that we had in set, the bid packet we had in set. If you remember, a two-by-four cost two bucks, and not too long ago, it was 12 bucks. So they went back and redid the whole thing to get to where we went out to bid in January this year. And as you know, it came in under budget. Everything is good. So this money is for that work that was done before we finally went out to bid. But the project itself is on track. I've been reassured. I'm still getting whiter hair and less hair, because I worry about it every night, but I'm being reassured everything's on track.
Well, you look fantastic. That for reassurance, but no, my concern is sludge. And, you know, that's my, I think you know what I'm talking, I'm just basically, it's like, it's not this thing, it's just like, is there any kind of, you know, A, B, C kind of deal where this will slow up any further ECOs? And then Quig does this thing?
No, no, this, this was going to be trying, kind of put this into a combination. We backed it out. We said, "I want to finalize this contract, be done with it, move forward with the construction project, and I will be coming back with some consulting services," but we are still on track.
Sweet.
Thank you.
Thank you for indulging my paranoia.
Thanks for bringing me up. You know me, how I love it, so.
Any other questions before the motion? All right, Councilmember Harris, since you pulled, I'll give you ops for making the motion if you'd like.
Press the button. I move to approve the addendum with Moffett Nickel in the amount of $74,251 even for design and permitting of the LM and N Docs Replacement Project, and authorize the City Manager to sign the addendum substantially in the form as attached.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, for the second, since we already had discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. Looks like it's unanimous. All right, thank you very much, thanks, appreciate that. And Travis, I want to just say congratulations, that your item was not polled, so we don't have any questions for you. You have patiently waited for this to be approved, so congratulations and thank you for your time, thank you for coming. And just to acknowledge your great work, thank you so much for managing this magnificent nonprofit in town and providing the entire community with this really cool feature down at the waterfront. Appreciate you. Yeah, thank you. Okay. Next, we're moving on to unfinished business, and the first item with unfinished business is middle housing. And the purpose of this item is for the council to receive a presentation and continue discussion of middle housing elements for inclusion in the comprehensive plan. Looks like we have Laura Techico and Rebecca Demming coming up.
Great, thank you. So this is mostly the same presentation, we've updated a few slides from the May 1st meeting. So, middle housing, just to recap, in addition to accessory dwelling units, there were two house bills that the intent was to provide for additional housing types within primarily single-family zones and lower-density multifamily. So, we were looking for feedback on three different topics. How many units to allow per lot? Some discussion on scale and unit size for accessory dwelling units and cottage housing, and then parking requirements for middle housing and ADUs. So, the discussion, we summarized here at May 1. We got most of the way through the, you know, do we count accessory dwelling units towards the maximum number of units per lot? The middle housing bill, you know, as a starter, requires that we allow up to two middle housing units on each lot. The bill states that you could get up to four if you are within a certain distance of transit, or if you have affordable units in there. But once you overlay that with ADUs, it gets complicated quite quickly. And so, initially, we were looking at, you know, more simply, could we just say a maximum of four units, middle housing, ADUs, that one single-family home on every lot regardless? Because you're going to start overlapping there. And then, there was a discussion amongst a number of cities, and, you know, the earlier ADU discussion was if you have a larger lot, could you get more units? And so, one way that another city or more have approached that is, you know, maybe we allow four units per lot and/or 24 dwelling units per acre, whichever's greater. And that would, just by, you know, simple math there, allow, you know, additional few units depending on how big your lot is, without getting too complicated and trying to come up with a chart on what might be allowed there. So, it's kind of where we left off. There was some discussion on, you know, how many, is there a maximum on number of accessory dwelling units, and how many to allow there versus middle housing? One approach there is potentially if you cap ADUs at three, then any additional units would be middle housing types, which have the full impact fees, they have potentially a little more parking requirements. And so, if there's anything else you wanted to add, you know, so just, you know, is this still kind of the direction we want to take on this? Is there any additional discussion on this particular item? Because we ran out of time.
Any questions? Councilmember Nutting, hands his hand raised, go ahead.
I just, I just want to reiterate that no matter what we decide, that the building codes and setbacks have to be met for the ADUs and other dwelling units.
Correct, so they would still be subject to the same setback requirements. So what we're talking about are maximum allowed units. It may be that lots, you know, just depending on their size and configuration, you may not be able to feasibly fit that many, but, yeah, it's still the same setbacks as what your single-family zones would have.
So if you could not meet, if you could not meet the setbacks desired to your backyard to the PL and your front yard to the PL, that even though we allow three to four dwelling units, and your side setbacks, you would not be able to allow three to four ADUs on your property?
Correct, not within those setbacks.
Correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz?
Yeah, I think I read that the governor signed the parking bill today, so now that will become law. Can you give us a kind of a quick overview of how that's going to affect?
So we will, we will hit that one a little later. You must have checked later than I did, because I checked late morning and it was still pending, so that's news to me, so that might just happen. So, that will make our discussion later a little simpler, with less what-ifs, so great.
And then, just the only other thing I would add is I'd still like that configuration of four units, ADUs and/or middle housing, and multiplying that out by acre. I think that allows a certain level of flexibility, given the differentiation we have in the city and the size of lots, while meeting the requirements that we have to.
Is there consensus on that approach? Councilmember Nutting?
Yeah, I was just going to give my consensus on that ADUs per acre is going to make it more simpler and easier for our staff to figure out.
So my question, I'm, a little clarity here, ADUs per acre is only like three, right? Three maximum, 24 units per acre, but three of those can be ADUs, but that is included in the 24.
That's where we left the...
Right. And then, council, and then Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, what was your, what did that mean, what you just said?
Mine was number of units, whether it's middle housing or ADUs.
It's just 24, okay.
24 per acre or for...
No limit on ADU is what you were suggesting? So middle housing or ADUs?
Middle housing or ADUs, but I think that I, my preference would be to limit ADUs. I think, yeah.
Councilmember Grace, oh, excuse, Councilmember Grace Matsui, and then we'll go to you, Councilmember Nutting, for your second time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I think this was just like at the very last wire of when we were having our discussion last, last week. Gosh, that seems like forever ago. So, yeah, I think we were talking about the limit, and then if folks wanted to increase the amount of smaller-sized dwelling, that we would encourage them or even require it to be the cottage style.
And/or other middle housing.
Or other middle housing, great. So there still is that limit on the ADU, and to move towards looking at the benefits of cottage or middle housing style.
Correct.
So I think we kind of reached consensus on that last time, I hope, but again, then the bell hit and everyone ran out.
Okay. Council, I'm going to grab Councilmember Nutting first, and then Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, and I, I'm in the same consensus with Councilmember Grace Matsui, that what I remembered was the cottage style, which we agreed on, so I'm comfortable with that moving forward.
Councilmember Harris.
Okay, just because, because we talked about this Kent kind of a thing, and then I heard that there would be possibly, maybe we don't need to talk about it, but what we're talking about now, one main unit, three ADUs, and then up to 24, which would be some form of middle housing. I just, can we get this into like a...
Right, so someone can choose either four units on your lot or 24 units per acre, which is what Kent is doing, that's the Kent model, but within that selection, you can only have three ADUs. So if you want more ADUs, they have to be in a middle housing type like cottage housing.
Okay, good, no, I just wanted to make sure that everybody, you just said it back, and great, thank you.
Great. Looking for other hands? My only comment is in regard to the parking, I would prefer higher requirements than the state, so go with the state, but I wouldn't go any less. Yeah. Yeah, I wouldn't, but it sounds like that's going to be brought back as a little, another segment of discussion after you...
Yeah, we're going to the next unit size discussion now.
Okay, all right.
Just to round out, and I'm not advancing here. Oh, there we go. We got most of the way through this discussion, do the slide deck. So as we're talking about, you know, and cottage housing is a type of middle housing. In terms of scale, the intent in size is that ADUs are the smallest, then middle housing, which includes cottage housing, and then single-family. So both middle housing and ADUs are typically smaller than a single-family home. So when we had the ADU discussion, our current code says that the size of those are between 350 at a minimum to 800. The state says we need to raise that maximum to 1,000. There was some talk about, you know, some talk and consensus about raising that 1,000 to 1,200. But then considering cottage housing being kind of an overlapping but slightly larger, a lot of cities have gone to, you know, kind of overlapping those, so if we're going to go with a 350 to 1,200, maybe for cottage housing, looking at something like 800 to 1,600, or, you know, sliding either of those scales up or down a little bit. But just to distinguish ADUs of cottage housing, but also, you know, trying to ensure that when somebody's proposing a cottage housing assortment, that they're not, you know, a array of 3,000 square-foot homes around, you know, small. So they're meant to be around 1,200 square foot is kind of the average. So, they're meant to be around 1,200 square foot is kind of the average. So, this is the next area of feedback we're looking for is kind of relative scale of each of these housing types.
Okay, Councilmember Nutting?
I'm, I'm fine with what's proposed on the cottages and ADUs. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilmember Harris?
You know, this is probably too big of a thing. But, this strikes me always, you know, you're beta testers for, you know, something, right? I mean, we get to vote for this very noble thing. And then, you're going to have to operationalize it. All of which is to say, if it turns out that some of these things are not exactly like, yeah, what, how much work? Would it be to unwind this, adjust it in some kind of way that?
Something like that is not too difficult to bring back code amendment.
That's the right answer. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Grace Matsui? Thank you. I do like, oh, I'm sorry, the presentation's gone. But, I have it here. The, it says here that the proposed for the cottage-style housing is 800 square foot to, as a minimum, and up to 1,600 square foot as a max. And then, we propose that it should be somewhere above, but possibly overlapping, overlapping with an ADU, but less typically than what a single-family home could be. And I think that that range of 800 to 1,600 provides a lot of flexibility. That someone who came in and wanted to either develop an entire acre or half an acre into something like that, they could choose the size and see what works out for the geography and the layout of that build. So, I'm happy with that. And of course, that means that, that we'll see a variety when they get built. Because people will have the opportunity to make those types of choices.
Is that, good? Any question? All right. Comment?
Okay, I have a couple. Are there height limits on these? Are they standard residential housing? What's that height limit?
Just like setbacks? It would be the same 30-foot height that the single-family zone.
So, you could have a pretty small footprint. Let's say you take cottage housing of 800 square feet, divide that by three. If you get three stories, you can have a tall, a bunch of tall skinny houses, right?
You can fit it within 30 feet.
And, pardon?
You can fit it within 30 feet of height.
Yeah, yeah. The resident, but residential homes have three stories here, right? Then, the, I just, I appreciate the small cottage with that. Does the, the 800 square foot allows people with a larger lot to get more of them in that are cottages versus ADUs? In other words, let's say you want 1,000 square foot units. You can call it a cottage instead of an ADU, and you can get more of them on a lot.
Correct.
If they're all the same size. Okay? And so, the benefit of reducing that 800 square foot if you, if you wanted, is that would even just increase that ability for people to get more cottage housing. If you wanted to do that, what, do you recall from last, last week? I just remember a surprise, being surprised at the number of lots in the city of Des Moines that would qualify for this acreage, as acreages. That, didn't you say there was, I was surprised.
There were quite a lot of lots that are larger lots in the city. Like, we have out of, there's about 8,000, just under 8,000 residential lots. And of those 8,000, there are about 2,300 that are over 10,000 square feet and 3,600 that are between 7,200 and 10,000. Now, we don't know how many of those are encumbered by critical areas and other things. We just got that number quickly off our GIS system.
Right, okay. Okay, questions? I'm going to take Deputy Mayor Steinmetz and then Councilmember Harris. And then, Councilmember Nutting, thank you.
Yeah, I just kind of want to clarify, because your question actually made me wonder. So, are the, the 800 minimum and the 350 minimum, is that the footprint? Or is that the total size of the building?
Total size of the square footage of the building.
Oh, well, let me rephrase that. Not building, because you could do three up.
One story and second story.
Okay, so each story could be, but they would be separate ADUs. You could have a three-story ADU and have three different dwelling units, correct? That's where I'm getting confused.
It would count, if you did separate units, like if one of our, if you had stacked flats was an allowable use, and you did stacked flats, each unit would count towards your unit count. But, you'd still have to meet heights and setbacks. But, that wouldn't be cottage housing. So, cottage housing are separate individual ones. But, you, if you had 100 square feet on each floor, and you had three floors, then it'd be 300 square feet.
Okay, that's what I was trying to understand. I think I, I think I got it. It's math.
Yeah.
Councilmember Nutting?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to reiterate. I appreciate your study on how many lots could possibly be affected by this. I just want to, I've had a lot of conversations in person with residents of the North Hill that are very concerned about this. Our setback policies and the state, the building code policies challenged this very much so. So, in, in passing this, there is going to be several challenges in getting these ADUs, cottages, or anything in any lots, most of which on the North Hill are far 5,000 to 7,000 square foot lots. So, I, I just want my, the, the people that live on the North Hill to know that this is going to be a challenge to put several lots in because of the building code setbacks. Putting extra dwelling units in the backyards of people's houses. It's going to be a challenge. So, we, we can pass what we need to tonight and talk about it. But, it's, it ultimately leads up to the building code and what our setbacks are and what kind of units can be within those setbacks. So, that's, that's all my comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris?
This is probably a really stupid question. But, is 800 square feet strictly structure? Or could it include courtyard? If you have cottage housing, it's typical to have the little cute things and then you have a little courtyardy thing.
It is not including the open space and courtyard. It is just the structure.
So, you couldn't cheat and do a 600-foot thing? And then, you know, to try to get in a couple of, okay, all right. I'm just, thanks.
All right. Any other questions? Good. All right, I'm looking, looking. Okay. Do you feel like you have the, oh, do we have one more theme?
Some of the sizes.
Yes.
Okay, then we're going to go to parking.
Okay. So, house, the middle housing House Bill 1110 has parking requirements built into it as minimums. It states that if you're within a half-mile walking distance of transit, no parking, off-street parking requirements can be made. Cities can allow up to one parking space per unit if your lot is up to 6,000 square feet, up to two parking spaces per unit if your lot's greater than 6,000. And then, do not have to reduce any of the parking requirements if you're within a mile of Sea-Tac Airport. So, that's kind of the starting point. We have to do at least that. And as we just found out, Senate Bill 5184, which has been on the governor's desk, you know, if that's signed, for a city of our size, we do have three years to implement all of it. But, there are requirements in there for residential and commercial developments that are, you know, that we cannot, that are even smaller parking requirements than what House Bill has. So, you know, one of the directions we're looking for is, do we start with what's in House Bill 1110? Or knowing that this is coming down the pike, going to the requirements that are in 5184? And so, that states that if the dwelling units are under 1,200 square feet, no parking can be required. No more than one-half parking space per multifamily units and no more than one space for single-family homes and middle housing.
So, the question is, do you want us to go with the most restrictive between the two bills now? Or some other mix?
Councilmember Grace Matsui, and then Councilmember Harris, and then Councilmember Nutting?
Thank you very much. I, I am looking to see if there was confirmation that the governor has signed Senate Bill 5184. And I'm not finding it right off the top of my head. And I'm not sure that it's, I mean, I think it's good to have the conversation, but I don't think it's, it's been signed at this point. I'm looking at the legislative report. But, I, I don't know that there is a high likelihood that he would not sign it. So, it's probably one of the things that's good to have the conversation about whether or not. But, it seems to me that leaning towards being compliance with 5184 is probably the most beneficial.
My understanding is the deadline for him, yeah, is May 20th to sign. So, that will happen one way or the other, you know, happen or not, before we bring the final draft ordinance back. So, having that conversation now, if that happens, if it hasn't already, is, yeah, is appropriate.
Okay. Councilmember Harris?
So, I'm like looking at the further amend the parking code to comply with SB 5184. And is residence synonymous with dwelling unit? So, when you say residence under 1,200 square foot, that's an ADU, it's anything.
Any residential dwelling unit under 1,200 square feet would not require any parking.
And, and when you say multifamily units, how are we defining those? I mean, is that a cottage or is it attached?
Under Commerce's current interpretation, middle housing, which is what we're discussing now, will fall under single family. So, that's, that falls under the one space. So, not the, multifamily is not what is being interpreted for this cottage housing and this middle housing. That would be true apartments and other true, you know, multifamily uses. So, cottage housing and these townhomes and, and what we're discussing now would, would fall under the single-family requirements.
Okay, and I'm, I'm sorry to be so, but.
No, I, I, we, we interpreted it initially, even when we discussed it and I actually talked to our legal team, we thought it would fall under the multifamily. But, I actually talked to Commerce and they specifically said, at a conference I was at, that it would fall under single family.
Okay. Yeah, no, I, I just, I mean, yeah, I mean, I'm very comfortable with just going ahead with, you know, complying with 5184. But, I'm just, I just always have these gotcha things. So, thank you for that. Thank you.
Councilmember Nutting?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad to hear that it falls under single family. Being a part of several projects that were right next to transit stations that served light rail and seeing cars parked along the road in hardscapes and other things. I, I would not support this. I, I don't support this, even being a part of single family, being in a neighborhood that most off driveway parking is in the public right-of-way with the ability to house as many people as you can in whatever the single-family dwelling unit is, plus the ADUs. There, there's just not enough of public right-of-way to accept off-site parking. And, and so, I, I can't support this. This is, this is a ridiculous requirement from the state that we enact. It's just not possible. So, that's, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris?
In large part, I actually agree with Councilmember Nutting. I find this discussion to be like almost a Sophie's Choice. And I, or Solomonic, it would be more apt in that I, there needs to be a much more 360 discussion of, because the parking, you know, yeah, it's got to go somewhere. But, it's just, you know, my support for SB 5184 is because you have to start having that discussion. And I guess, then you have another discussion. But, his, his points are all extremely well-taken. Thank you.
Councilmember Mahoney?
So, 5184 is signed. You said we had three years to accomplish that?
Correct. So, if you picked a different parking standard now, we would be back in two and a half years modifying the standards.
Would it allow us and buy us time concerning that we see it being a, probably a realistic parking problem in the future? And maybe they pull it back some or something like that? So, we start with something with a, with a more maximum parking with the idea that we can work, like future councils would be able to work backwards to, if the law upholds itself later. So, would that be more of a recommended buy in time? Like, I am very concerned about parking and access and a lot of other things that'll occur in some particular neighborhoods is, is my primary concern.
You, you could. I don't think it's going to get pulled back. The votes on that were very, I, I don't think the legislation is going to change.
So, Mike.
The legislation in our favor.
So, yeah.
If it's not, it's going to get stricter, if anything.
Okay, so my, my question, that's why I ask, is would, is it better to buy time? Or, in your opinion, as somebody that's, your team's going to have to execute this, or just go ahead and do it, even though we don't like it?
Right now, our suggestion, we're not suggesting to make the changes wholeheartedly in the bill. We're not, we're not going to come, because this current plan is only dealing with the residential. We're not making changes to the whole parking code right now. So, we're not even coming back to you and making all of these commercial changes. So, all we're discussing, which you guys were having a big debate at the ADUs on how much parking. So, that's why we're only having that discussion now, because half the councils wanted to reduce parking with ADUs anyways. And so, that's why the discussion is here in the first place, is to try and figure out what that middle ground was. And so, that's, that's the only reason we're here having that discussion, is what makes sense. So, where it makes sense? If we were to take both of, the strictest of both worlds, the way I see it is, would be no parking under 1,200, no parking within the half-mile of the airport, which we have to do, and then one space per unit for anything else. And so, that's where we would be at if we took both bills. So, we could subtract the no parking per 1,200, but then I need to know where we would be at, correct? That's what I would take as the.
Right.
But, then we'd be back to, we could only require one space still per unit for lots up to 6,000. And then, we could, but we could then require two for anything over 6,000. So, that would be the difference. So, there's not a huge difference to get from the one to the two.
Okay.
Okay. So, Councilmember Nutting and then Councilmember Harris, I think. Did you have something to say, Councilmember Nutting?
Yeah, I just, I can't, I can't support anything that does not allow any parking. So, if, if we have to allow some parking, I, I just can't support, I can't support not having any parking stalls. just can't support, I can't support not having any parking stalls for that.
Okay.
Need to correct myself. I said half a mile from the airport. I meant half a mile from transit.
Major, major transit.
Major transit, correct.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor. I, I just, unfortunately, I've been, I've been in projects that, that those, those rules have been applied. And unfortunately, here in the United States, we love our cars too much. And even if we are right next door, less than a half a block away, we still have three cars for a unit, and it, it, it doesn't matter. And so, I have to protect my residents and constituents by saying that I just can't, I can't support a zero parking spot.
Okay. I, now I'm, I'm forgetting the hands at this point. So, I think Councilmember Harris had a hand, Councilmember Grace Matsui, and then, and then Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, thank you. And this is more rhetorical. I'm, I said before, this is a beta test, and we don't know what the adoption rate will be. However, what we are seeing with regard to tariffs, and the market loves certitude. And what I have noticed in my time here is that we have things, we put them off, and people are constantly saying how they're blindsided about this, that, and the other thing. And to my mind, if we vote for this now, it gives us a couple of years to start educate. First of all, it's simplicity. And then it gives us a couple of years to educate people that this is happening, folks. And, you know, it, it's just, it's better to get started now and try to develop that better behavior slowly, but slowly over time. Thank you.
Councilmember Grace Matsui?
Thank you. So, I want to make sure that we're talking about the decision and guidance that you need from us today. And that is about middle housing, that we have to turn in guidance to by June of this year. And it doesn't have to be about all these other commercial spaces, senior housing, childcare facilities that are also encumbered, a part of the Bill 5184. So, we can take that off the table and not think about those things. But we do want to think about now, the parking requirements that we might have for middle housing that we need to finish by June.
That's correct.
Okay. So, the question now is, should we go with the ones that we've already discussed and came to pretty much consensus on for House Bill 1110, which we can sort of extrapolate and keep in place and already apply? Or do we need to make changes to this, anticipating that maybe 5184 is going to pass, be signed by the governor?
So, my understanding is we did not have a consensus out of the ADU or parking at the last meeting for parking out of middle housing. 1110 is a minimum that we have to meet. So, we need to understand whether we want to just stick with both 1110 as our base for parking throughout the city for both ADUs and middle housing, and that's our standard, or whether, you know, we want to be more lenient or more restrictive.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz?
Yeah, I, I mean, I share a lot of people's outrage about these, these standards. It just seems crazy. I understand the motivation, which is that they want to push people towards transit and not have cars. But, they haven't fixed that transit piece. And so, doing a lot of this now is really just going to strand a lot of cars out on streets, and much more parking around neighborhoods. And it's gonna be really, really difficult on a lot of people. That all being said, 5184 has been signed. It's clearly reported in the Seattle Times as such. I have no reason to disbelieve that, that reporting. It's, that's the standard. And I do think there is something to be said for, okay, if that's what we have to do going forward, that's what we're gonna have to do. Because I, I agree, I don't think they're going to walk that back, even though there are gonna be a lot of cities screaming, they're already work. And the, the impetus from the legislature simply, and I disagree with this, but, is that that's how they're gonna push transit. And-
And housing.
And, and housing together to try to funnel people in getting around that way. But, it just is what it is. And, and I don't think we have any other choice but to comply. And I, we should set the standard by 5184. And really, to all our constituents, if they don't like it, they need to contact their state legislators and let them know. Because this is, this is crazy.
Okay, so, okay, I just want to clarify. Our, our only decision based on Washington state law, if this is true, is we go with 5184, or we don't go with it and wait until our deadline.
That's correct.
So, and the deadline is two years, or three?
It's three years.
Three years. So, right now, we do have an option. If we like more parking, we can say, just wait until the deadline, bring it back to the council in three years, because that's the deadline. And it sounds like we have a, a general frustration from the dais that says, we want more parking. I don't think anybody up here has said, let's, let's go ahead and reduce parking, if we have the choice. If 5184 didn't get signed, I don't think anybody'd say, let's, let's reduce parking. Okay, well, we got more hands. So, let me consider here. We've got, had several opportunities to offer our opinion tonight, and we've had lots of clarity, and we do have more business to do. So, if it's essential to the discussion, and give, take the temperature of everything you've heard, and I will call on you. So, Councilmember Grace Matsui, and then Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I am in the favor of more leniency when it comes to choice, developer choice, to put in parking or not put in parking. As I said in one of our earlier discussions, each parking spot is seven to $15,000 of just concrete, that could be a lawn, that could be a garden. If we decide that we want to have a certain number per residential parcel, I can go with the majority. But, I also think that we can offer it as a choice to the developer or builder to say, you can go with lots of parking if you want, or you don't have to. Because I think the intent of many of these bills is not to increase transit ridership, it's to increase the amount of housing that goes in, that is affordable, so that folks can get into smaller units that they may not previously have existed, so that they can bring down the average rent, which in this city is really, really high. I mean, we're seeing folks trying to get a one-bedroom apartment for close to $2,000. But if we increased the inventory of smaller homes, then those prices would go down, and we would have folks that were able to live within their means. And so, I, I don't believe that parking is issue, but we're getting hung up on it. Because I think the point that we're trying to get is more residents coming to Des Moines, more people who contribute to the economy in Des Moines, who buy things here in Des Moines, who've put their kids in school here. And then developers can look at us and go, hey, guess what? Your city's growing. Maybe we will put in a new grocery store downtown, because you're increasing your population. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you. This conversation went in a funny direction. Every person that I have talked to who has been stymied in, in developing some kind of ADU deal, does not want or need more parking. It's a project killer, okay? They want to establish a multi-generational compound kind of a deal. I can, I mean, I've got a list of like 11 people within the core, 223rd, the micro-farm area that I talk about. A gentleman came here last week and shook my hand, and was like, he really thought this was done and dusted. But, the fact is that, I mean, I, I fully appreciate the concerns that people might have in areas of smaller geometries. But that flexibility is the only way that these kinds of projects pencil out. And, and I, I think that word flexibility is extremely well-chosen. And I, again, this is limited to this subset of dwelling spaces we're talking about now. And I don't want it to, you know, people to make it out to be more than what it is. And, you know, anyway, I think it's, it's just, it will actually be a boon to the people who actually want these kinds of, you know, ADU and cottage things to have that flexibility. I think I've said that word enough times. Thanks.
Okay. Council, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, and then Councilmember Mahoney?
Yeah, I, I, I think we're kind of missing something here. And that is, the flexibility already exists. This is the minimum, or the maximum amount that the city can require on these bills. If the developer wants to put in more, they can. And there's nothing in these bills that would impact that in any way. So, I, this flexibility argument is, is not responsive to anything that's really going on. It's just, these are what the city can require in order for development. Isn't that correct?
That's correct.
All right. So, it's just a matter of, are we going to adopt these, you know, the 54, 5184 limits now, or in three years, or transition to them? Those are the three options. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. And my sense is, it's, it's the law. I don't think it's going to change. I think we may as well bite the bullet, and at least provide a certain level of certainty for the market, that this is all that we can require.
Councilmember Mahoney?
I think there's a philosophy versus reality here. What I'm gonna favor and support is as much parking as we can legally allow under these constraints. I think we have to. I think we need to do our best for that. I think what will happen is it will be a problem. Understanding the philosophy, what they're trying to achieve, I always point back to the Adriana. A lot of you, those of you who were back here remembered, there was a parking requirement, and there was gonna be two stories of parking. They argued the fact that only 20% of their residents were gonna be drivers. At least, this was what I was explaining. And it ended, and 80% worked. It ended being reverse. And honestly, in that area, and of course, around the retail space, there's no parking. It's a fight. And I'm assured that that's what will happen. So, I just want to be clear that I am for the most, most parking we can get is a requirement. Under, under House Bill 1110, I think is the one that would favor that for now. And if we get to 5184, then we move that way and let that council decide that. Unfortunately, it'll be over a couple of years it occurs, and that's when it's gonna hit a lot of people in the face in their neighborhoods that they've been impacted. But it's philosophy versus reality.
Councilmember Nutting?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I absolutely agree with Councilmember Mahoney. And dealing with developers in my line of business, if they did not have to provide parking for anything, 212 units, 400 units, whatever it is, they would be absolutely elated to not provide that. So, the, the issue comes with the fact that we absolutely have a parking problem in our downtown, in Redondo, even up on the highway. So, if we can punt this down the road, I'm absolutely for it. I will not support anything that does not punt this down the road and allow other projects to come into development before this goes into action. They, developers would much rather not pay for parking than develop it. So, that's where I stand.
And another, for clarity, this is not in regard to commercial or multifamily, right? This is still, we're just talking about ADUs and homes.
That's-
Stuff going in people's backyards. Okay, I think that, so, can you frame the question? I think you, what you're looking for is what to bring back. Do you want, do you, so the question here is, do we want to go with the 5184 right now?
Correct.
Or do we want to kick it down, kick the can down the road? And if we go with the 54, 5184 right now, it means people don't have to do parking. They, they can put stuff in without requiring parking. If we kick it down the road, it says we still have this parking requirement, even for people who want to put ADUs in their backyard. That, was I, was that clear?
Go with the 110 requirements?
Mm-hmm. The 110?
Right.
Okay, so, still, it's not totally clear to me here how we're all feeling. So-
Yeah, right now, I have about a 3-2 difference.
All right. So, uh, uh, because, so for me, this is just people's backyards. I'm gonna say no requirements. So, I'm the, I'm the 5184 now version, because this is just backyard mom and pop. I'm, I'm just gonna have to go down the road, the, the road for them. So, Council, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz?
5184.
5184 now?
1110.
Okay. Councilmember Grace Matsui?
5184.
Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Oxiker?
5184.
And Councilmember Nutting?
I, I couldn't hear everybody, but I kicked the can down the road.
Okay. All right. Does that give you what you need for this one? Okay. Do we have anything else on the parking that you want to address or ask us?
Those were the three. I think the only last, last head nod we need is, I think both bills give an exemption within the mile of the airport. But since I think we've got the majority going with the less restrictive, that we're not going to exempt within the mile of the airport, and we're gonna put the same parking requirements within a mile of the airport.
I think we only have like, what, 15 houses within the-
No, there's, there's more. It's, yeah, it's a North Hill area. But I think, we've been keeping the same requirements within that area. So, I believe, if I got a head nod, to keep the same parking requirements throughout the city. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, it looks like they got everything they needed here. Okay, next up, we have our Appointed Committee Structure Conversation. And this is gonna be City Manager Catherine Caffrey. Looks like we have enough time. Let me look at this. Okay, looks like we're gonna get through this enough time to get the Lake Haven one in.
Yeah, we should.
Okay.
Bonnie and I are gonna sort of do this one together. This is a follow-up to what you all were presented at the March 6 study session. Okay, next slide two. Okay. So, to recap, we were asked to look at the committee structure. We're doing kind of a pilot program on council committees, which we can revisit at the end of the summer, see how that's going. But we were also asked to look at the Appointed Committees. You currently have seven, March, and you've added two more. March 6, we proposed merging Human Services, Senior Services, and Arts Commission. The feedback we got was to meet with the impacted groups, including the Citizen Advisory Committee, but also to sort of bring back a different proposal. So, since that March study session, we have met with the CAC, the Arts Commission, Human Services, and Senior Services Advisory Board. The key things we heard were that there was some frustration or disappointment that the committees don't always meet as frequently as some of the members would like, especially some of those specialized groups. Some members were unclear about their role or felt underutilized. We have had a lack of strong staff support to these groups. The staff members that actually were assigned to three out of four of those groups are no longer with the organization, and so we need to sort of retool that. And then, some members liked the idea of having this broader focus from more than just what they were on right now. Other members felt like, no, I really just want to talk about Human Services, or I just want to talk about the arts. So, a sort of mixed feedback on that. Specifically on the CAC, the alternate role felt unclear to people, like, are they participating? Are they not? Are they going? And then also, and I would say, we're also seeing this right now in the Airport Committee, sometimes there are low applicant numbers, which make it very hard to fill seats. Like, currently, we still have, I believe, only three applicants for the Airport Committee, which is not even gonna meet the, the minimum that was set by the council. We are not recommending any changes to civil service, lodging, or police advisory, pretty much because those groups are working or are really organized by state- much because those groups are working or are really organized by state statute how they have to sort of operate. So, we're focusing on these four. Just a reminder, you currently have seven committees. You've added two more, that's nine. So, you'll have the Planning Commission Airport Committee as well. So, that's, that's a lot of committees, just to have people involved with, but also, it's a lot of committees for us to sort of, to staff. So, we've got two options to throw out to see if any of these strike you all a little better. Option A is that we would expand the CAC by adding seven at-large members that could be nominated by council members or selected via the existing process, which is where the mayor interviews and, I believe, you know, brings forward recommendations for the council. And then, these would be in addition to the current neighborhood representatives. So, we'd no longer have the alternate position, because it's very unclear to people. And so, I'll show you in a minute how it would look, but we'd be expanding that group. Within the CAC, they would also have some subcommittees that would focus on some of those specialized areas. And the subcommittees would meet independently and report back to the full CAC. So, what it would look like is the CAC would have eighteen members. It would be fully staffed with both, like, a staff liaison that would help with agendas, making sure meetings are happening, packets. There would be a dedicated city clerk's office rep, which would ensure we're getting minutes, meetings are recorded, following all the rules that we should be, that we've been inconsistent on. And then, there'd be obviously IT staff to deal with meeting recordings. Those subcommittees that would function would really meet independently and report back to the CAC. That would be how we'd capture sort of what they're working on, and then staff would be involved with those as needed. And those groups would maybe meet intermittently throughout the year. They don't necessarily meet continuously. We really want you to focus on option A.
Subtle, subtle, but effective.
Okay. Oh, go back. I think there's more after option A, that thing. Yeah, okay, so, whoa.
This one?
Yeah. Oh, my God. Okay, good, okay, stop there. Thanks. I'm like, I can't remember where. At the March sixth meeting, you all asked me to sort of be more clear on really what is the value to citizens of doing these changes. I'm not going to read through all of these, but at a high level, the value to option A is we have citizens having more opportunity to be involved in a group that has greater influence on a wider range of city issues. There's more seats, so there's more opportunities to get involved. I think having some real dedicated staff support and some structure will actually benefit this group. And then, of course, this allows people to both have engagement in a broad initiative, because the CAC is very broad, but also, if you have a special interest in maybe Human Services or something, you can focus on that as well. Also, by expanding the CAC, we could offer those seats to the existing members of those subcommittees first, to see who may be interested in this new role. Next slide. I won't go through all of these. I kind of talked about the advantages. The disadvantages is it's already a pretty large committee. We're making it even bigger. Some people did prefer to stay within the specialized groups. And then, again, sometimes we have a hard time filling these seats. Okay, it's working. Uh, option B is we keep the CAC as-is, so that's eleven members plus the alternates, and then we add this Human Services Subcommittee. The second thing would be, we would create a new committee called the Community Events and Services Committee, which we can retool that name if you want. It would have seven members, and it would really focus on senior services, arts, parks and rec. So, what that would look like is the CAC kind of stays the way it is, but kind of absorbs this Human Services function. The Community Events and Services Committee would have seven members and really focus on a lot of those community enrichment services. Both these groups would have a staff liaison, city clerk, IT, we'd be doing minutes, like, we'd be, we'd be staffing these boards like we should. The value to the citizens is it kind of has, if you're really just interested in those community enrichment things, you can have that opportunity. The disadvantages is that, we did hear a lot from the CAC members, they really feel underutilized. And I think there's a big appetite for a larger ability to influence things. This particular option doesn't necessarily really give them the body of work to have the impact they may want. And it does add a second board, so we're, we're not really, we're still pretty board and committee heavy, which has some real operational impacts. This is a summary sheet, if you want me to refer back to it. And I am going to stop there to get your feedback. At the, we do have in this PowerPoint, in the appendix, the existing status of members with terms and things like that, if you're interested to flip to that. So, we're looking for feedback on, if you like these, you want to edit it, go back to the drawing board, whatever.
Okay. What I would like in this, if, if we could, just in encouragement, don't want to be too overbearing here, but if we could come forward with a strong opinion or position statement, state it well, state your, why you feel that way, and then we will go to a second, I'll, I'll offer you a second, a second time around, just to be concise, so that we can get through this, I, I would prefer not to call on somebody five times. So, if we can be concise as we move through the dais, I'd appreciate that.
Point, point order?
Yes, sir.
So, we are discussing option A before discussing option B?
No, you're picking what you want. It, you, we, this is our second time up of this conversation, and all of these options have been presented to us before. We, and, and the presentation before, you've had this in the packet for this whole week, and now we've had this presentation. So, I'm hoping that we have come to an opinion by now. And so, what I'm asking is to pick your opinion, state why you have that opinion from the dais here, so that we can give direction to staff. All right, I'm going to go down. Anybody who wants to give input, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I, I strongly support option A. Having chaired the CAC for the last year and a half or so, I can tell you, there is a huge appetite for more on that committee, and option A does that, so it's responsive to the people that are on the CAC. But I've also heard from other places in the city quite consistently that they want more opportunity to be involved. Increasing the membership in the CAC would do that. Additionally, I think that the burden that is placed on staff by having multiple committees, it tends to, it tends to grow, and this would give one, presumably one or so staff person for that. So, I think that's better for the city staff, and I think we'll get better staff support because it won't be so divided. So, I think there are really a number of reasons to do that. And the other thing is, we've talked about, you know, wanting to grow future leaders. And I think the CAC, and particularly an expanded CAC, gives the opportunity to do that, and I think that would be a really good thing for the city. So, I think it's what's wanted. I think it's what works for the staff, and I think it's a great way to encourage more involvement in the city. And so, I, option A.
Thank you. Councilmember Mahoney.
Thank you, Mayor. I also prefer option A. I agree with all the things that the deputy mayor said. The only other thing I'd add was, we, and I also ran the committee for a couple of years, too, and I saw the appetite, the desire, and the excitement to be part of the process and to learn more. And I agree, it creates future leaders. But the best thing about that, in adding the seven members, is it is probably one of the best cross-neighborhood representative groups you can get. A lot of our other committees, you get pockets of people, no, they, they all do good work, and there's no offense to that. It's just that I think it gives a better cross-section across so many, so the points of view are from neighborhoods and respective and so forth. So, I think option A is the best choice.
Thank you. Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the most important thing that you asked us is to give a very strong opinion on this one, and I, I'm hoping that we can do that, since we're so hesitant to offer our opinions. For, for a couple of reasons, I'm going to choose option B. One is because I heard very loudly that some of the folks that are in the subcommittee, proposed, that would end up being on subcommittees, are not really feeling like their voices are being heard. And putting them as a subcommittee underneath the CAC, and have we thought about changing that to Des Moines Advisory Council, so it's like DMAC instead of CAC? No, okay.
Well, that sounds good to me.
Yeah. But if, it just doesn't feel like, even if you look at the structure of, of when you have the organizational chart, that they have the same voice or importance if they, if they weren't their own standalone, even though they'd still be combined, and we would meet the goal of reducing the number of committees that we need to support. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, just to make sure, Councilmember Grace Matsui and I are on the same page. The subcommittees, those members, they're still CAC or DMAC members, so they can, they're really CAC members who then are sort of, okay, you are on the same page. Okay, got it.
Good. Uh, Councilmember Nutting.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have to agree with my, with, with Deputy Mayor Steinmetz and Councilmember Mahoney with, I, I think the option number one is the way to go.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Harris or Councilmember Oxiker, either one of you want to offer your thoughts?
Point, point order.
Oh, well, not, not by plan, but.
Um, so, just as a point of clarity, with option A, the three subcommittees, they would still be staffed and recorded and all of that stuff, or not?
What we had presented was that these groups would meet independently, and staff would be involved as needed. So, for example, when it's time to sort of look at those Human Services grants, staff would obviously be very involved helping them. But if you're asking as it relates to, like, minutes and agendas posted and recordings, no, the thought was that really the CAC is what would be staffed that heavily, but that at the CAC meeting is when the work of those subcommittees would be reported out, so there would still be some record-keeping.
And, and so, like, let's say the arts thing, or any of them, if they have some kind of, you know, recommendation, would they first report that at the main CAC meeting, and then that goes to the council, or how, how would it? Because if it's a subcommittee, right, then it goes up the food chain, and then it goes to the council, or would they report separately to the?
To the council?
Yeah.
I think the thought would be, they would sort of report to the CAC, and then the CAC would sort of be the group. Right now, because this kind of came up when we met with the CAC, it is an advisory group, and I think they did not like the idea of feeling like they were somehow, this is my word, not theirs, like, superior to what these subcommittees work on. But I do think they're sort of like a practical matter of, I mean, they would be a subcommittee of the CAC, so.
Okay. No, I'm not, I'm not trying to, okay, so we have an expression, maybe they have the expression here, different bread, same sandwich. And I am strong, my strong opinion is none of the above, and that the city should wait until you have the new website and digital presence rolled out. And I'll tell you why, there is just a shortage of applicants and participation. And what all of these bodies need more are more bodies to be representative of the city writ large. I will just, as a, as a matter of logic, if people wanted to do more in terms of arts, human services, all this stuff, they could certainly have applied all along. I don't think there was anything precluding people from, you know, people certainly engage in all kinds of multiple activities. Somehow, if we truly wish to be representational, we first need to do that better outreach. And once you have the larger applicant pool, then the organizational structure will take care of itself. So, I, I totally understand the initiative. I'm with you all the way, but, you know, you want to have thirty, forty people in our size city applying for these things. And frankly, from what I've seen, we struggle to field a team in any of these contexts. And that is in no way just a disparagement to the people who really put their hearts into all of this stuff. But this is, you know, I'm feeling a little jealous, because in, in a sense, there will be better staffing for the CAC under at least one of these options than, you know, the committee structure. So, I, I, I just think you need to bring more people onto the playing field first, and then address this structure. Thank you.
Councilmember Oxiker.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I, I agree with Councilmember Harris, the, the need to, to give, get people more involved and to have the opportunities that we haven't had right now. I mean, if you honor the website, it's almost impossible to find what's open or get anything done that, that way. I do think that one of the areas that I think that people would, would flock to is the idea of the Community Events and Services Committee. I think that people do want to get involved, and that, you know, we're talking about parents with kids being involved in, in different services that we're offering there. Seniors are very involved, all of that. And I think you go with the arts, too, that it's just, I, I'm intrigued by the Community Events and Services Committee aspect, so I think I'm going to go with option B.
I'm going to offer my opinion. I do have a strong opinion, option A, and this is why. I, too, am concerned about the lack of involvement in the community, and I am very concerned about trying to set up too many committees and pull from that same energy. Right now, even if you look at things that aren't involved in the city, we've got a lot of crossover in our nonprofits in our community. We have a lot of nonprofits, a lot of energy in this community is divided and crisscross. We've got people serving on three nonprofits in the community. We've got even some of these nonprofits still struggling to get some of that energy. I agree that we could do better in communicating, but are we going to still be pulling from that same energy? And, and you, I'm considering is what comes first, the interest or the recruitment? Is it already that people who are interested in getting involved are involved because they went and found a place to be involved? Or do we think that there's just somebody out there that really would do well serving on one of these committees, and they're doing, they're sitting at home doing nothing because we haven't recruited them? I don't believe that. I think that the energy inside of a, a community member comes out, and they, they're, it's too much, they figure out a way to serve. So, I think that the energy for service in this community has been activated generally. And I'm, my concern is staff capacity and facilitating the success of these committees. Because right now, I wish that Airport Committee was already activated, and that we could lean on them for action, or to do things, or to research, or whatever. We can't yet. And so, I'm concerned about finding quality individuals that will actually get good work done on these committees. One thing that I, so, that, that's a big thing. It facilitates strength for the new committees that we have. We've got to pull talent from people who are probably already doing something else. One thing about recording and the amount of staff time that needs to attend to a committee now and what we're expecting of people, if we back out even six years ago, things were so different. Tech was so different. Expectations were so different. Transparency expectations were so different. The kind of attention that we are requiring from staff to attend to a high-functioning committee is way more than it was even just six or seven years ago. And for a city this size with the energy that we have, I'm very nervous about super, a non- nine high-functioning committees. I remember, you know, I'm a member of Sound Cities Association and our former executive director, Deanna Dawson, who now does Association of Washington Cities, she wants, we got in a committee conversation, she said, "How many committees do you have?" And I was describing, you know, she goes, "That's a lot of committees for a city your size." I'm like, "Well, we're making it work." But I'm just saying, now we're adding two more and these two more are going to be high-functioning. I've said a lot, I've talked a lot, I feel strong about option A. So with all that in mind, I want to go, offer one more time, a second round of opinion, if there's something that hasn't been said that you thought of, maybe where your opinion tipped a little, fine, I'm going to give one more option across the board here. Councilmember Harris.
Mayor, I think you're actually making my argument, but this really comes down to a certain philosophy that people, you know, will feel the need for public service. Newsflash, this is a, this is a problem in every venue, every context, and this decision point does not have to happen now. And the city does have a limited number of calories, electrons, however you want to define energy. And at my, you know, when I first talked to the new city manager, I said, "Take a year, see the field." In my opinion, 100% of the city's energy should go towards figuring out how we can engage and recruit more people. I do not, this to me is another variant of if you build it, they will come. And I do not believe that is provable at all. I believe that unless you make an active and very different effort at recruiting people, you will simply build something and the few people who already participate will be extremely pleased and we will thank them for their contributions. But we will not, but if the goal is actually broader participation and truly bringing more energy into the city, in other words, this is, you're going to have a situation where you're going to get less out than you put in. And what you want from a machine is that you put in a certain amount of fuel and you get more work out of it than, you know, and that is my concern. When you actually look at the numbers of the participants and the, and the staff time and everything like that, I do not see how this engenders broader recruitment. And that should be, that's like, should be the goal, is getting more people into the game from the totality of the space. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember Nutting, you're doing fine over there? Okay? All right. So the decision here, did you, did we count up our pros and cons? And did we want to take a, pardon? Okay. So I am going to, if there are no other, I'm going to open the dais for a motion. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
I move that we adopt option A.
Second.
There's a, a motion and a second. We've had detailed discussion and I opened it for a second comment, so I think I'm going to just go straight to the vote. So all in favor of option A? Oh, excuse me. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I, my computer, which I'm dropping off with Chris later, I did not hear what the motion was.
Okay, the motion was to move to direct staff to move forward with option A.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the clarification.
All right. Thank you for raising your hand. All right. Moving to a vote, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Deputy Mayor, excuse me. Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Mahoney, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz and myself, all opposed. Councilmember Oxiger, Councilmember Harris and Councilmember Grace Matsui. Motion passes. Okay. Make sure we did everything. Next up, we have new, new business item, the Lake Haven Utility Update and Extension. The purpose of this item is to introduce to the council for a first reading, a draft ordinance 25-037 addressing Lake Haven franchise agreement. We have a presentation from Matt Hutchins.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Matthew Hutchins, Assistant City Attorney, with the staff presentation on draft ordinance 25-037 relating to a Lake Haven water and sewer franchise agreement. The current agreement we have with Lake Haven dates back to 2011. It's a 20-year term set to expire in 2031. It comes from a time when there were some open questions in Washington courts about the relationship between water sewer districts and cities. So the agreement was based on these issues that were up in the air, but most importantly, it did not provide for a franchise payment to the city. In 2016, the city negotiated new franchise agreements with the other four water and/or sewer utilities in the city. Three of the four opted to exchange, paying a 6% franchise payment as part of the agreement in exchange for the city promising not to impose a utility tax that could have been at a rate much higher than the 6%. Water District 54 at the time did not opt for that deal. Last year, the city did renegotiate Water District 54's agreement to provide for the 6% franchise payment. And as a result of that, staff was directed to reach out to Lake Haven to see if they were amenable to such an agreement. Ultimately, those talks were successful and we have come to terms with Lake Haven. The agreement would include the 6% franchise payment as it does for the other four utilities. It extends the term of the agreement for another 10 years out to 2041. And it brings the agreement in line with the other four with respect to things like relocations right of way, planning insurance. And in exchange for what the city gets, the city has the same promise not to impose a utility tax during the agreement and a promise not to assume the district. So there is a suggested motion on the screen. As you may remember from the Water District 54 amendment, state law does not allow the council to approve such an agreement on the same day it's introduced. So we're asking for it to be set to the next city council meeting. That is, that ends my presentation. Are there any questions?
Questions before the motion. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz?
If I'm reading this, this provides essentially some stability, I'm sorry, thank you. This provides some stability to Lake Haven. In other words, they have a consistent number out an additional 10 years beyond the agreement that we had previously. Is that correct?
That is correct.
The 6% just gives them a stable amount they can count on?
Yes, the agreement foreclosed us from, for the next couple of years imposing utility tax, but when that agreement were to run out, we could, for example, impose a 16% tax on them. So this gives a predictable, stable amount through 2041. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. So everything else would be just policy, I guess, but is it, is there any, you know, is there any kind of, 10 years is a long time and is there any, I guess, so now we've got all franchise agreements pretty much, you know, mostly, and is there any thought of, I guess a deal's a deal, but I'm just trying to think about simplifying this at some point, or if that's not even an issue. You know, is there some, other than just the rate, is there any advantage or disadvantage to the franchise model over the utility tax model for the city? I mean, we're just, we're going to vote for it, but I, it's just something that I always, I always wonder about because you've got, we have, it's like the committees, we have a lot of little SPDs for such a small plot of land. And I always wonder just how, i- is there something, some simplification over time that, in our relationships? But that's, it's probably too broad a question.
So do you have, do you have a succinct question? Okay? Because we're just going to pass it to the next meeting, maybe you could come up with a.
I'm just, I'm, there's just something about this that has always, so I.
We'll bring it forward when it comes back.
Fair enough, thank you.
All right? Good. We have a motion and a second? We don't have a motion and a second? Okay. So do we have a motion? You have another question? Okay, great.
I wanted to ask a little bit about our pledged commitment to making sure the franchise agreements are in align with, alignment with each other. I'm wondering if you could tell me more about the assumption clause that we give into Lake Haven. Is that in all the other franchise agreements?
I have to defer to the city attorney on that question.
It is in all of them except for the Water District 54 franchise.
So this doesn't bring all of the, they're not all the same?
They're substantially similar and they, I mean, this is a 40-page document, right? There's a lot of provisions in there. The council in 2016 elected not to include a non-assumption of Water District 54 in the agreement. And the council, when they amended the agreement with Water District 54, they also elected to not include it last year. So yes, there is one provision that is not in the 54 agreement.
Are there also provisions in the other franchise agreements about eminent domain and how we could seize their property?
If that's in any of them, it should be the same.
But it's not. So I think it's in one franchise agreement and it's not in the other four. How about whether or not the Lake Haven has to inform the city in case there are changes to water, fire supply flow?
I'm not specifically sure on what that question is.
Oh, I'm looking for if the provision about notifying the city if there's any disruption to the fire supply is also in the Lake Haven agreement.
I believe it would be, but we can take a look at that. I mean, these agreements generally should mirror each other, so.
So if they don't, do we have the opportunity to go back and ensure that they do across the utilities?
The council can propose amendments to different utilities, so we certainly could if it was something that the council desired. But if you wanted to provide those to us in writing, we can take a look, because I don't have the other four in front of me right now. So if you would provide that to us, we can definitely take a look and we can report back at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, and this is just, just a heads up. My question will just be cost recovery. Just if there's a way to know, I mean, 6% over 10 years, 10 years is a long time away. And that's just, I, I'm, we have, we have good ideas on our SWIM fund in terms of ongoing cost recovery for our own maintenance and 6% in 10 years will not be the same as it is now. So I'm not saying we can do anything about this deal, but it would be interesting to know what that will mean in real dollars. I'll formulate a better question and look for that. Thank you so much.
Especially any other questions that you would like to, when this comes back, you would like to see, you would like to know something or see something. But any other discussion, I think we can go for the next discussion. Yes, Councilmember Oxiger.
Yeah, I'd like to see possibly charted what exact differences we have in the, in the, across the franchises. I mean, you know, I think that what we should be looking for is uniformity, we're treating everybody the same.
Yeah, and I'll tell you that that's generally what has occurred. When you think about this, when you're dealing with organizations and attorneys, you're going to have little things that each organization, so we negotiated Lake Haven in 2011 with their attorney.
Right.
In 2016, we negotiated the four other ones, Water District, Water District 54 had their attorney. The other three utilities were represented by one attorney. So there was one attorney that had some slight modifications, the Water District 54's attorney. And then this agreement, Lake Haven had a different attorney from their 2011 agreement, they had some very minor modifications. So you're going to see that. But yeah, we can, we can attempt to put together something showing some track changes.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Nutting? Any questions? Good? All right. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz?
Can I make a motion?
You can make the motion? Sure.
I move to pass draft ordinance 25-037, the second reading on our, on the next available regular city council agenda.
Do I have a second? Second with Councilmember Nutting. I'll open it for any other discussion out of principle. Okay. All in favor, raise your right hand. Looks like, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Oxiger, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Mahoney, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz and myself, all opposed. Councilmember Grace Matsui opposed, so motion passes. Okay. The next item up is new agenda items for consideration, a time for the purpose of proposing new business items for discussion on a future agenda that also have not been previously before the council, it's not a time for council action. Or questions about old business, you can submit questions or seek updates previously discussed with the city manager at any time. Do any council members have new business they would like to propose? Okay. Next up is unfinished business number two. It's, you look like you're about ready to raise your hand, okay? Is the, about the protocol manual, the purpose of this item is to continue a discussion and review of our protocol manual in the last meeting. So we will do protocol review until it's 15 minutes, but we can pick up at least one thing until 9:00 PM. I'm feeling, I'm feeling you want to say something. I'll let you go ahead and say that.
I'm looking at the time and I'm suggesting that this was, this is not a 15-minute discussion.
It isn't.
And I would really, we haven't done council member reports and updates in an awfully long time. If we were to start that now, we probably will still go overtime to finish that. And it just seems to me that we need to move this to a date when we have more time to get into this discussion.
All right.
So I would propose to do that if there's a consensus on the council to do so.
Do we have some head nods here? I'm not going to take a vote. Just go straight to council member reports and take care of the protocol manual, defer to the next meeting. And since it's an agenda item, I guess I would, I would like to take a vote. So you, I'm going to consider that a motion?
It's a motion.
Do I have a second on that motion? Councilmember Harris has a second. If there's no comments, just any, everybody would like be in favor of council member reports now until 9:00? Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Oxiger, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Mahoney, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz and myself, all opposed. Councilmember Grace Matsui, motion passes. We move on to council member reports and we start with Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. And so, let's see here. I met with a couple of people from University of Washington regarding the upcoming air quality monitor deal, how to get that going. The funding was approved and I guess the ball is in our court at, at the moment, which is a complete surprise to everyone because it'll just. is a complete surprise to everyone, because it'll just, we're going to do a little timeline thing at C-Tech Noise, but the idea was put forward in 2014. And so the researchers are like, wow, how did that happen? And I attended the, I attended the ferry demo last night with a couple of my colleagues, the mayor, and they can talk more about it. But I'll just, we sort of discussed about routes and so forth. It's a lovely boat, and I think it is, it is transit. When you get a chance to, to ride it, it will not strike you as being this luxe kind of a deal. It will just strike you as being like an Embraer. It's a, it's a, it's a thing that you would take to get to, you know, your destination. It's comfortable, but it's, it's not going to be a gee whiz thing, and that's what you want transit to be. But on the way, we talked about routes and use cases and so on, and so I did walk home and think to myself, you know, wouldn't it be great if we had a demand study? And, and we're doing the demand study after the thing. And as SR 509 comes into existence for people now, I'll just remind everyone that the alignment was decided in 2003. And so the normal practice is to establish a demand and routes and use case, and again, we're kind of building it and then figuring out what to do with it. And it may be totally lovely, but it's just a curious thing. And that's it.
Councilmember Oxiger.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Thank you, Mayor. I was on the same boat, but I must have been on a different cruise, because I was very impressed with the ferry. I thought, I think there's a lot of demand. I think we had one in a, in a beta test not too long ago that proved that there's legitimacy to it. The fact that we are forward-thinking, that we were seeing the future, and we took free money, and we're doing a charging station, everything else, they were elated to hear that. They thought we were on the cusp of that what we wanted to do and objective is put ourselves at the dinner table, at the center stage, to be a component for the future of this type of ferry system. It is going to happen, and we need to be in the driver's seat, and we've done what we can. The forward-thinking that we've seen from some of the council is proving true now, is that's what I saw yesterday. Wasn't going to talk about that, but I had to. Over the past month, we've lost two members of the community that are near and dear and contribute a lot. We lost Mr. Steve Novak, and we also lost BJ Bjornby, who his wife had just passed away about six months prior. Both individuals were some of the finest people I've ever met. They were always, they were the, what you want in the community. These were the types of people that always helped behind the scenes. The Bjornbys put on the parades for decades. Steve never took credit for all the work he did for free at the farmer's market and so forth, and he was part of the start committee and so forth. I see Joe's gone, and he would have acknowledged the same. But Steve was somebody that was always there for everybody, loved the water, fishing. BJ loved the community, loved the parade, prominent member of Rotary, and our city's less for them. But what we can do is keep them in our hearts and emulate their behavior.
And reach out to Susie.
Yeah, well, leave her be is what I say for now. The other one was, a lot of our hard efforts, as, as many of us have past council members and some of the current, we've really been trying to push for future, future capital projects. And of course, the, obviously, the flagpole's going up, but the one that was prominent over the last couple of weeks was the bathroom dedication. It was beautiful building. Divers are loving the showers, by the way. That's what I'm hearing. They say thank you. But this is a big win, because these are the kinds of investments that add value to the community, add value to the properties, and make our city a desirable location for not only the ADUs and cottage homes and other development, but they are what's going to drive our future instead of stagnating in a spiral where we go nowhere. So it was awes, it was awesome to see, and the mayor didn't run with the scissors, so nobody got hurt, and it was all good. Thank you.
All right. What is up next? Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Thank you. I just wanted to give a, my appreciation and applause to Rotary of Des Moines and Normandy Park for Swing With A Cause, which was back in April, seems so long ago. I heard from Jeff Gross that they had a sellout of all of their tickets, and that the auction raised about $2,700. So they don't have the final, final revenue that they will come back to us and tell us. I also wanted to say thank you wholeheartedly to the staff who came and supported us, and supported all the folks, and those of you who also did put in some swings and perhaps won some prizes because of their swings. Folks like Rebecca and her family, we saw Bonnie there, of course Scott came by, and I saw a little bay of just folks who were like the swim people. So Tyler and Casey, and of course Catherine and her family came by. It was awesome to get the chance to see you outside of this room, because I see you mostly just in this room, but also to show your support to the community and the causes that Rotary put this on for. So I very much appreciate that. Coming up, we have a ton of stuff going on. I hope folks are going out and getting involved in some of the community events. We have things coming up with the Des Moines Yacht Club for our opening day of boating season, and I'm sure our mayor and deputy mayor will fill you in on more of those. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. Councilmember Nutting.
I have no comments tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Well, a lot going on is, is really, it's a lot, but, you know, starting with Top Golf, that was wonderful. That was the Rotary Club of Des Moines and Normandy Park. It was a great event. I think everybody had a good time, even those that didn't know how to play golf, and, and somehow managed to get the hang of it very quickly. So our mayor set, set the tone there. First she was, then she wasn't, then she was, and then eventually she got out there with the club and actually did just fine. They have different kinds of games, an Angry Birds version where you knock down a video tower like, like the Angry Birds do.
You get it wrong and you score points.
Yeah, basically. And, and, you know, my first swing, I knocked down the building, and I never repeated that again. So, but, but it was, it was a blast. There was also a great auction that was mentioned, and I can honestly tell you that the gift card that I won from Bakery Renewal has been used up. It was, it was wonderful. Now, but now I've got to find a California Pizza Kitchen. So tomorrow, in the noon hour, Launa, which is our local laborers' union, has a grand opening of their training center on Pack Highway. It is a wonderful new facility. I've watched it coming in there. Both the mayor and I were there at the groundbreaking, and, you know, this is going to bring a lot of people into our community, young men and women with good union labor jobs. And that's who hopefully is going to buy some of the denser, the denser housing, and then as they mature, they're going to like Des Moines, they like what they see, and they're going to stay in Des Moines. And that's the process or the churn that we're kind of hoping for there. But, you know, this is, this is really a big deal to open up a training center like that here in Des Moines. I am the liaison to Destination Des Moines, and I'm also been a member of the Parade Committee. Starting with that, the parade is starting to come together really nicely. And so anybody that wants to volunteer on the parade, we can use you. Anybody that wants to make a donation to the parade. We do have Blue Thunder, which is the Seahawks drum corps. So it'll be a really interesting battle to see if they can match the noise from the Pirates when the Pirate Cannon goes off, because I, I think that'll be fun. Plus, the Washington Husky Alumni Band, and-
Mayor, we have two minutes left, so there's going to have to be moved to extend.
Then I'd move to extend for 10 minutes.
I'll second it.
Okay. 10 minutes?
Yeah, all in favor, raise your right hand. 10 minutes. It looks like there is a unanimous, yeah, passes. Go ahead.
Yep. And this weekend, Destination Des Moines is doing a sip and shop. So you go to various places here in downtown Des Moines, the neighborhood businesses, and you can shop and have a glass of wine and, you know, just kind of have a fun experience with that. Some of the places have gotten into and extended this concept, and now there is a Mrs. Roper from Three's Company, a Roper Romper party afterwards at Kahana Sushi. I still don't quite get the concept, but I don't look good in a housecoat anyway.
Tight, flat pants and a polo shirt for you, man.
Yeah. I don't know that I have. Well, anyway.
You just have the tights? Is that all you have?
Tight, flat front pants.
Tight, flat front pants. I, tight pants went on a long time ago for me.
That's Mr. Roper.
But, you know, lots of events going on for the rest of the summer. I'm just going to shortcut that. And then, of course, at the yacht club, there's a pirate ball that night that is close to being sold out. You know, the Redondo bathroom has opened. I think that's already been covered, so I'm not going to dwell on that, but I think that's a great asset to the community down in Redondo now that that's done and moved across the street. So, and to the extent that anybody goes and looks at a bathroom, next time you're in Redondo, check it out.
Take a shower.
It's really nice. Now, we don't need to encourage everybody to take a shower, just the divers. So, anyway, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, this is getting lively up here. I attended a, a great event every year on Earth Day. The Friends of Saltwater Park has a little family-oriented gathering of tents and activities and books and games for kids, and that was a lovely afternoon on Earth Day. And that morning, I was able to attend the Baby Coho release. C-Tech does that up at the headwa, you know, up at the trailhead of the Des Moines Creek Trail. And I understand we're going to be partnering with that going forward, so I'm excited for Des Moines to be part of that Baby Coho release. Also, on the same day, it was National Sculpture Day, and I appreciate George C. Scott in his studio right in the middle of town. They had all sorts of bad music and activities for the family that day as well. You'd go build a little sculpture, you could do glass art. I just appreciate he and his cohorts pouring art and music into the community, and so through events like this that he hosts out of his own studio. So I wanted to give him a shout out about that. Same day, SR3 had an open house. I always have to give a shout out to SR3 and them saving all of our sea mammals. They're doing a great job down there. Also recently, I attended an interesting tech summit that was hosted by Riot Games, the parent company for League of Legends, and they also have a very popular Netflix show out now called Arcane, based on the League of Legends game. Those guys are at the prowl of global broadcasting tech. And they, in their facility up there, they hosted tech leaders from all over the world, actually attended this summit, and there were broadcasting teams from every sports team in Seattle up there. When I, when I went, I just, I didn't really have in my mind what this was going to be, and I felt very uneducated wandering around, visiting with folks. But I think the point here is it's amazing what can go in a business park warehouse, and these guys, what they're drawing up there and bringing into just our city of Des Moines. I appreciated the caliber of professionals that were gathered in this, in this building. It was absolutely incredible. So thank you to Riot Games. We, speaking of businesses, we have eight new businesses in town just this last month. The deputy mayor and I write thank you cards to every new business that gets a business license in town, and that's a lot of new businesses. So really proud of our ability to host new businesses and encourage them. I also met with King County Library System, John Scheller's the government relations person. They have a relatively new executive director, Heidi Daniel, from the East Coast. And their vision is to really nurture the idea that libraries are the up-and-coming new community center with, you know, like the educational community center. And so there's just this, this kind of paradigm shift about what King County Libraries are really going to be inside of our communities, and I was very excited to hear that vision. And they're, they're going to be doing some revamping, things like here's, here's interesting, putting these pods inside, inside of a library, but also in different places in the community, like the airport, for example. So you have a little mini library pod if you have, like, to do business mobily someplace, so you can go, you know, a little space that's, they can move, but it would be the King County Library, a little eight-by-eight space. Innovative ideas. I really appreciated meeting with them. And we have a new community center up and coming on the highway by, it's being established by the Amanas Association. They're going to be outreach-ing to, there's two huge first and second immigrant communities up there through Waterview Crossing and also Point by Vintage across the street. I'll tell you, they have a grand vision to bring families together and reach out to young people. I'm just walking, I just want to say, walking through that building, they, they're just beginning. You walk through that building and it's, I don't even want to imagine, this is the old adult video porn shop. What used to be in that building and what they're going to transform it into, it's a whole different, it's like reclaiming space in the earth for something good. And I was so inspired that somebody wanted to do that. So very thankful for them coming into the community. Sunday, Happy Mother's Day to all of you mothers out here. I'm looking forward to a fun day. This concludes our meeting for the evening. Our next meeting date will be a city council regular business meeting on Thursday, May 22nd at 6:00 PM. Please remember to pick up yourself on your way out, which includes me last time, I forgot. Councilmember Harris, do we have a motion?
You bet. I move to adjourn this meeting.
Do I have a second? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, all in favor, raise your right hand. Looks like it's unanimous. Thank you so much.